We also have with us at the table Mr. Mike Moncler with the Louisiana Oil and Gas Association. If it's the pleasure that committee, I'd like him to maybe chime in as well at this time.
Yeah, that's fine. Mr. Moncler, go ahead.
Thank you Chairwoman Emerson for the opportunity to speak to you guys today. And thank you Representative Boye for running this important bill for our industry and your all together support that you've been for our industry through the years. Investors in the oil and gas space have a choice of where to put their money. Between the litigiousness of our state, which is a whole different subject, and our state having the highest severance tax in the entire United States, it is difficult to attract new drilling investment into Louisiana and particularly in oil-rich South Louisiana. Comparing Louisiana's 12.5% severance tax rate to our bordering states, it isn't even close. Texas is at 4.6, Arkansas at 5, and Mississippi at 6. When investors are prospecting deals and see that the bottom line profit margins on day one are eight percentage points lower than Texas, it is no surprise that they choose to invest across the Sabine River. For the last five years, Louisiana's severance tax revenues on oil have gone from 328 million down to 165, back up to 350 million, and then last year losing about 67 million to settle at 283 million annual for Louisiana. These fluctuations don't really reflect activity levels going up or down. They merely represent the average price of oil each year. But when we take a closer look at Louisiana's intake by the numbers of barrels severed, it tells a different story. Just in the last five years, Louisiana is down 11 million barrels annually. 11 million barrels times 12 and 1/2% is a lot. So if we lower our rate, we might be able to get those barrels back. There's a lot of inactive wells. There's a lot of operators that aren't able to operate due to cash flow issues. This is just will incentivize operators to come back to our state. I made a few copies that I'd like to give. If y'all want to pass around, you can kind of see, the second page shows the actual number of barrels that have been produced over the decades. But the really telling picture is a graph on the front page, and it just shows a gradual decline all the way from the 80s to now. And we just continue to go down. So while we might have a great year because the price of oil might be $90, it's not because we're doing any more work, it's because the price of oil went up and severance has paid on the price of oil. So we just need to try to get activity back to get more production so that our state can reap the benefits of it. So again, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Okay, Representative Echols, that's a question.
Thank you Chairwoman. Thank you Representative Boye for bringing this bill. I remember the debate quite vibrantly last year. And I guess I want to bring everybody back to basic supply and demand and some of the market conditions that we don't take advantage of in Louisiana. Maybe Mr. Moncler, you can talk about this too. Over the last five years, how much oil and gas, infrastructure, and development money has gone to Texas?
That's, I don't have a figure on that, but I know-
So two years ago, the number was $48 billion for our major refiners and other extraction agents. That was the number that was put up two years ago. Give me an estimate of what came to Louisiana in that same timeframe.
Two years ago?
Within the last couple of years.
Well, I mean, COVID hit everybody. But I mean, one of the things that we're having an issue with, even in North Louisiana, in our prolific play of the Haynesville Shale, is some municipality issues where we've seen the Haynesville Shale used to have 75% of the rigs on the Louisiana side. And because of municipality issues in Caddo and Bossier, we now have only 35% of the rigs in the Haynesville. Because the Haynesville is on both sides of the Sabine River. So yeah, I mean, we've lost even our Haynesville work to the Texas side.
Well, I know some of our oil and gas lobbyists that are here can talk about, you know, Louisiana only getting about 5% of the action versus Texas and other states getting 80 to 95% of the action. So Louisiana's not competitive, and this is one of the largest reasons for that. I think that when you look at Louisiana's severance taxes three times more than Texas, it's obvious where you're going to go to make that investment. This is just logical, supply-demand, cost curve. Where are you going to go? Where does it cost less to produce? You've got less legal, you've got less taxes. You go to Texas, you go to Arkansas, you go to Mississippi. So this is a no-brainer bill at the appropriate time. Chair, I move favorable.
Thank you Representative Echols.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we are working on our sound issues. Apologies about that. Representative Ogeron with a question.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm going to put the mic back a little bit. First of all, first question, nothing to do with gas. I remember the previous ones dealt with also trying to get some parity in the natural gas. This one has absolutely nothing to do with natural gas. Okay. Secondly, so basically we're taking it from 12 and 1/2 down to 8 and 1/2%, a drop of 4% over eight years, 1/2% each year. And in the statute, you had all the lower-producing wells, less than 25, 25, or you know, 25 to 10, less than 10, and those were all just done as a quarter of whatever the rate was. So the bill immediately from day one sets those stripper wells and those lesser wells directly to the 3 and 1/8% from the start.
Right. So it basically locks the incapable wells and stripper wells in at those rates today based on a 12 and 1/2% as opposed to lowering those wells as well when it comes down. So just locking in the rate.
It drops them as of the signing of the bill at the destination rate for those wells, at the lowest rate.
I think it'd be October.
Yeah. It just puts it straight off at 3.125.
Correct, that is correct.
The point of, you know, some could say, well, why doesn't those follow along? I think there's an advantage to dropping those lesser-producing wells, having some experience in decommissioning, purchasing of sunset properties, et cetera. Representative Landry, would that possibly allow the operators of these lower-producing wells, rather than just letting them go off and become into the orphan well program, actually being able to actually take them down to the end and do the appropriate plug and abandonment off of the government's-
Rep Ogeron, you make a valid point. So if you look at those stripper wells and how they designed, once they get to a certain point, you know, you've got certain things like scale buildup in these wells and scavenger issues. And so even lowering that this tax on them would actually give the operators, like I told you, in a year, some of these wells at as low as 100 barrels a day, seems like 100 is a lot, but it's not when it takes the operating of that well. So you might have a $68,000 savings on that well or more to where you can perform those operations, where you can actually start to get the production up. So you would see a trickle up in those scavenger, in those wells that what we call stripper wells. I think with investment, once those operators will start seeing their profits grow because of the dropping the severance.
I think the bill's a good idea. I'm in full support of it. The point I want to make is those in the, those operators with those wells in the very last days of their lives are getting kind of an eight-year head start on making this extra money, squirreling away these nuts. Take care of the well, bring it to the end-of-life completion, and do the appropriate plug and abandonment off of the state's dole, please.
It takes, and I really feel that it would take a lot, a lot of liability off of the orphan well program in the state.
Thank you. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Representative Farnum with a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So yeah, you touched on a great point about the production increase offsetting the loss of the revenue that we see today. The fiscal note shows a stair-step approach to this. Is there any thought put into this fiscal note that shows projection of increased revenue from more production?
No, the, and I mean, we have someone from the fiscal office that can, if you want to direct answer, if I'm speaking wrongly, you can jump in, but it does not do that. It, it's more directly impacting that, so it's difficult for them to, I'll let him answer the question. He's the economist.
Morning, Mr. Farnum. And I'm chair and members, that's correct. This doesn't-
Push yourself.
Ben Vincent from the fiscal office, author of this particular note, just to the question. This note does not feed any direct response to the policy change in the form of increase.
Is it just not part of the process that you can't allow that or use any projections for increased production? It's just not feasible?
There's no mechanism in the rules, the joint rules for fiscal notes specifically for it. If there is a well-established, like empirical literature on something, a specific input in a bill that we're going to score, we will. In this particular one, the closest thing to it, we did have a pretty thorough dynamic examination of something similar a couple of years back with Center for Energy Studies. If memory serves, that was a full exemption on new drilling or just enhancements. This is a half exemption on just sort of everything, so not quite analogous. I mean, but we can certainly discuss the concepts. I do think the response would be a lot smaller in this case, but it's not baked into the note. I can say sort of back of the envelope, what the results from that old study would imply in this case would be maybe an offset of 5 to 15% of the static costs that are what's reflected in the note. But I think that would, it might be a pretty aggressively generous assumption in this case.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, on another note, the, when you start allowing a company to accumulate capital off of a little higher profit margin, that reinvestment, that incentivizes the reinvestment into those wells to then, like you were talking about, move them to a higher production rate by being able to afford the capital investment in that well. So over time, I don't see any way except a positive movement for this, for companies to now come back to Louisiana and continue the production that they've ceased over the years with a lower severance tax. I liked this bill four years ago, I liked it three years ago, I liked it two years ago, I like it today. So thank you for bringing this again.
Thank you Representative Farnum. And members, just a quick little education part, what Representative Farnum's talking about and Mr. Vincent's talking about is what we call dynamic scoring. So what he's doing, he's measuring what can directly be measured by the bill. So they're, based on production, the drop in severance taxes is going to have this amount of revenue impact to the state, period. He can't extrapolate how many jobs will be created, he can't extrapolate what it's going to do to the oil and gas economy. This is, the way the rule set is it's strictly based on the direct rates and what production is. So it's, you'll hear this referred to over and over as dynamic scoring.
Is it okay if I add a comment to that, just a plug on the dynamic scoring concept? It is done pretty commonly at the federal level by like the Congressional Budget Office and stuff like that. They have in their rules, you know, explicit processes for it and realistic resources to pull it off. But just for context, their rules provide that they do it on bills that have a static impact amounting to about 0.25% of overall GDP for our purposes. If we adopted something in similar sizes, that would only apply to notes that have a static impact of about 750 million a year. If we were going to incorporate those kinds of processes at our office, certainly something we would love to do, but it's also something we would have to take seriously in terms of the time it would take. That CES study, for example, was housed at something externally funded at LSU and was a weeks or maybe even months-long research project, just for one bill. And just so everyone's aware.
Yeah, if I could add something else too, you know, we're talking about this very slight step down and, you know, 1/2%, right? So if that 1/2%, if the price of oil goes from 78 to 85, there's an increase. There's no decrease in taxes coming in. I mean, this is a very, very slight step down.
Yeah, it's actually a, the fiscal note could be very deceiving because after one year of a 1/2% reduction, we could actually see an increase, or we could see a number that's way bigger than the number on the fiscal note. So it depends on the price of oil, like you were talking about. So thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Representative Willard for a question.
Thank you Chairwoman Emerson. Chairman Boye, don't we have a friend who loves dynamic scoring?
We have, we have a handful of friends that love dynamic scoring.
Just a couple of questions. I know over the past four years, you and Speaker DeVilliers and our former chairman, Bishop, spoke to the Tax Foundation a lot about changes that we were implementing to improve our tax rankings across the country. Have y'all ever talked about this proposal? Because I know we've seen it several times.
We've brought it up as part of the complexity of our overall tax system, but not from like a, if you go on like into the state ranking standpoint, not from that direct angle. I don't know that it would, you know, play as an impact on that ranking as much, just because, you know, we're talking about a specific industry versus when we're talking about sales taxes and income taxes and property taxes, unemployment taxes. We're talking about the entire Louisiana economy. So although, they could probably give us some feedback on what it would do specifically in this industry, but normally they're looking at the taxation of the state as a whole and not at individual sectors of it. And so this is just one of those little pieces in it. But from a complexity standpoint, it's, you know, we are unique in this as well, so.
So, I mean, I appreciate the approach of stepping it down to a more competitive rate. I do have a concern about the cost, and I know it's not coming all at once, but over a period of five years, I think it goes up to about $100 million. And I, you know, I do agree with some of what Rep. Farnum said and what you guys were talking about. If the price of a barrel of oil increases, then this may have a negligible impact. It may not reduce revenue to the state at all. But just going off the hard numbers we have, looking at a possible deficit, well, forecasted deficit next year and taking away money from the state, do you have any concern about that or?
Well, no, yeah, absolutely. No, we all, this whole, everybody better have a concern about it. So to say that I don't have a concern about the, what's going to happen in the next couple of years from our state fisc is, we all have to be paying attention. And so what you, what you say, and I don't disagree with, I have concerns about it as well. But I also have concerns about the status quo and the way that we are operating the state of Louisiana. And if, if we want to continue operating the state in the fashion we are and keep getting the same results, we'll keep doing the same things. And so there are some challenges that we're going to have to face, there's some risks that we're going to have to take. And I think by having the approach of stepping it down over the eight years as minimizing that risk, to let the state, give the ability to embrace the change and to be able to, you know, facilitate some more jobs and revenue for the state of Louisiana. And I think this is just one small component of it. This isn't, this by itself is not going to fix our oil and gas industry. This is, this is a piece of the pie. And it's, you know, it's just like when we talk about, hey, what's going to bring all these thousands of jobs back? There is not one fix. And we can, you and I can sit here and in about two minutes list about 20 things that we need to fix in the state of Louisiana to bring jobs back from, from education to roads, to, you know, just on and on and on. Oil and gas is an example. This is one piece of the pie within oil and gas that we need to bring it back to parity with other states and make Louisiana more competitive, to give ourselves the opportunity to even be in the discussions, you know, for success.
So one thing you just brought up, and Mr. Moncler was talking about it, and I think Rep. Echols actually brought it up, the infrastructure investment going to Texas compared to Louisiana. Anybody can answer this, but are there other incentives that are driving those capital investments in Texas as opposed to Louisiana? Because I know we have one of the most, if not the most lucrative, industrial tax exemption program in the country. So when you look at that, and they could get 80% of their property taxes waived for a period of 10 years in the state of Louisiana, I'm wondering why that wouldn't be enough of an incentive to bring them to Louisiana? Because property taxes are higher in Texas. So if anybody just had some insight on what else Texas may be doing to drive that investment compared to Louisiana?
Well, I mean, I think in income tax, obviously, you know, that's a big thing. I mean, I remember years ago, making sales calls in New Orleans, I would leave on Monday and come home on Thursday. Now I leave on Monday and I'm back in Lafayette by 5 o'clock. There's no more customers, you know, on Poynter Street. All those towers used to be called C&amp;G, MacMoran, Texaco, LL&amp;E. All those towers now are bank towers full of law firms. So, you know, they've left our state. We need to get more competitive with other states in order to bring business back.
So you think they left because we have an income tax?
Well, no, I think that's a big reason that big companies will leave.
Like I was mentioning earlier, I don't think it's any, I think it's a total package in the way we approach the state and the way we're operating the state. I think we have to change the way we're doing business, it's just that simple.
I was just wondering if there was maybe another policy or something that Texas is doing that is really incentivizing this investment?
And to be, to be clear on this, Rep. Willard, to understand the fundamentals of this bill and focusing on this bill and oil and gas, oil and gas in Texas is a very abundant source, right? We have the Haynesville Shale, we have the inland waters, and we have what is called, the difference is, Haynesville Shale is what you call bulk of your unconventional oil. So it's a very robust start and then it tapers off. Then you have unconventional, you have conventional oil, which flows more in the southern regions of the state. And it's, we call it longevity. So you might come in at 4,000 barrels of oil a day, but 25, 30 years from now, if you have the capital to keep it, it flows like a checking account. It might be at 100 barrels still in 20 years. So when you got to look at the severance tax, when you talk about stripper wells, those wells could actually, you could see a very large uptick in people going into those wells. And what I mean by that is, just like any industry, any business, you have different caps, right? Mid-cap, you know, major corporations, whereas this will bring in, this will maybe streamline with everybody. And the small businessman will also strive off of this too, because the way oil and gas works, you start with, the top tier comes in and puts major infrastructure, and then it goes down and down and down. And Rep. Ogeron is gone, and we've done a lot of work because you have to get rid of these wells, right? But when you're going to look at the severance tax on stepping down and what it does for the stripper wells, I think you're going to see a very big uptick in Louisiana on that in general, because I don't throw pennies away, right? I see them on the ground and I pick them up. So a 20-barrel, a 20-barrel oil a day well is worth a lot, especially when you can get that severance tax decrease and you can put some effort, say in a call tubing job, well, let me rephrase that, a wireline job, or some acid, an acid job, or even like a workover job, where you can actually now go in and re-complete a zone and you have that capital. So on a, on a 365-day well, let's say you get 300, let's say you get 280 days production at 100 barrels a day and you fluctuate, and you could easily see with this severance tax, like I said, an easy clear 80, 68 to, and I'm using those numbers because I keep crunching them in my head, 68,000 to 80,000 free clash flow that can go into well intervention and up in production. So if you look at 4,500 wells in this state that fall in this realm, think about that if you can get them back up to 100 barrels a day.
Well, so that dovetail into the next question I had, and be careful with those pennies, they have a lot of germs on them. Do we have a lot of wells just sitting kind of inactive in the state right now, wells that can produce?
Roughly about 4,500.
Okay.
Give or take. And what I mean is that have some production, it's just are they feasible to go back into production?
Can they make a profit?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. And then final, final question, point, I guess, so Texas's severance tax is what, four, four and 1/2?
4.6.
4.6. So over a period of five years or so, we're bringing it down to 8.5, we're still double Texas. And I appreciate, I mean, look, I know we can't go all the way down because it's going to cost us a ton of money.
I'd like to, Representative Willard, I'm-
Yeah, it's going to cost us a ton of money. Right. But you guys think that bringing it down to 8.5 will incentivize more activity in Louisiana?
I think it shows good faith and it starts a conversation. And like I'm learning, and Rep. Boye might correct me, but I think you could even see an uptick in oil and gas and even amend to get to those numbers we need to get to whenever we show the uptick in the revenue and the barrel of oil intake.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Y'all can also see why I have him at the table with me.
Rookie mistakes. I have just a few questions. First, what states have had an uptick in oil production? You know, you talk about Louisiana's had a decline. What states have had?
Texas for sure, New Mexico, Wyoming, North Dakota.
And what would you attribute that uptick to?
Probably business-friendly environments. With the exception of New Mexico.
Could you elaborate a little bit on, when you say business-friendly environment?
Well, I mean, tax structure, litigation, those kind of things that, you know, push business away.
Yeah, I think you have, you have three stools, three legs to that stool. I think you're going to have regulation, you're going to have taxation, and then you're going to have litigation as part of the three legs. And I think what you're going to see across the different states is that they have advantages on all three legs of that stool. And so we're chipping away at one of those legs with this bill.
And I share my, I guess, representative, my colleague Representative Willard's, I guess, curiosity as to, we talk about trying to make Louisiana a more productive, economically prosperous state, and I'm wondering what are those things that we need to do to improve things? Because we're a state blessed with abundant natural resources, yet we always at the bottom of everything that's good. And obviously, if we're looking at what Texas does, how does Texas offset the fact that they've such a low severance tax rate, yet they still, you know, seem to do all right fiscally?
Yeah, a couple of things. I don't think when you look as a whole that they're such a low severance tax rate. Compared to us, they're a low severance tax rate. You know, when you look at around the country, that's not necessarily the case. Severance tax also has, you know, locally high property taxes. I mean, that's how they fund a lot of their education and whatnot, it's all on a local basis, not on a statewide basis. So there's a myriad of things that they do that are different from us. But Representative Bayham, the questions that you're asking are questions that we are all searching for answers to. And if you can get that magic eight ball and shake it and it gives you a single answer-
It's been you the question, because you've been here longer than I have, and y'all are much more, in fact, Representative Landry knows much more about the oil industry, and this has been very educational. And I'm trying to, I've been furiously taking notes throughout this whole discussion. One last question I have. How confident, if we bring this severance tax down, do you believe we will have a meaningful spur in production?
I think it definitely will have a definite meaningful spur in production. And what it won't do, and I can promise you this, it won't have a negative impact on it, for sure. And what we have to do as a state is, I mean, first of all, we'll have a meaningful uptick, but we need to stop the decreases as well. We've done so many things as a state to have negative production to the state, that's the things that we need to stop. I think to what Representative Landry was saying ago, this shows the good faith that the state is saying, hey, we are open for business, we're ready for our oil and gas jobs to come back. I think that's what we're saying as a state, and it's a mindset and attitude that we have to have as a state to let people know that we're here, that we're welcoming, and that we're not an anti-business economy and state.
I appreciate your candor in the answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Bayham. Next we want to have Representative Wilder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chairman Boye, thank you for this. A couple of things, a three-legged stool, there is a magic eight ball here. It's called cut taxes, period. The forecasting that a business does as an entrepreneur and as a business owner and as a developer is usually 10 to 20 years out. It's not two years, it's not four years. So if I'm in the oil industry in another state, we're not competitive, I'm not coming this way. When you're in business and you put your money up and your capital, you take much risk, all risk, actually. you take much risk, all risk, actually. And, um, we operate on risk, and we make investments. But when you can operate on common sense incentives, it's a lot easier to make those investments. Uh, if you go back 20 years or so, there was a GoZone Opportunity Credit for hurricane victims and people built all over the state. There was a ton of economic activity due to those incentives. Um, I don't believe there'll be any cost to this, personally. I believe it'll actually be the opposite. I believe that the simple economics, when you talk about the oil and increased production, supply, demand, everything that a few of these reps mentioned about the cost curves, 100 barrels a day could go to how many, Rep. Landry? Any idea if, if the incentive was there to drop this to that?
It's, it's hard to say, I, you know, just going through my head.
Go up, though, right?
You, you, yeah, it could. You, like I said, you, you actually creating opportunity, and you creating, you actually might fulfill some people's dreams as being an alman, right? I don't know, ma, not many people may not have that, but when, you know, when you come from a family of doctors, right, everybody wants to be, their dad's a doctor, their grandfather, everybody. So, I come from a family of almen, and there's other people out there in other parts of the state, in other states, that this doesn't only, uh, it gives them more opportunity to wanna be an, an alman, and, and that's what it takes to go after these wells. So, back to answer your question, you could easily see a thousand wells possibly get looked at, AFE to be worked. And, uh, the two, the trigger is also still, um, the climate of, uh, you know, legality, but, uh, like I said, you, you look at 1,000 barrels, 100 barrels a, a day, do the numbers.
Well, we have an insurance committee working on one of those legs, and, uh, obviously, there's, there's a number of angles we're working on to make the state better. Texas is at 4.5, is that what we were told? What is Mississippi?
4.6. Mississippi is, uh...
6.
Okay. So, when you, when you add these wells, that's vehicles being bought, that's communities being developed, and, I mean, for instance, in my own company, and I don't do anywhere near the revenue, I'm incentivized by Article 179 to go buy new equipment. These are gonna force, when, when, when businesses make more money, they have to spend the money. That's what this is about. So, my only question would be is, why are we stopping at 8.5%?
Thank you.
That's my only question. I mean, if I'm a business, make the environment better for the businesses, because it's not just what's on this fiscal note, it is every bit of peripheral investment, as well as the, I mean, cost segregation. Y'all know what that is? That's when I build a building and I can take 60% or 80% or 40, whatever it's gonna be this year. There are incentives to generating profit that cascade across the entire community, so, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Wilder. Thank you, Representative Wilder. Next, we're gonna have Representative Myers.
Chairman Boie, and Rep. Landry, thank y'all for bringing this. Uh, Mr. Monclaw, uh, good to see you here. Also, one of my constituents, so glad to have one of my constituents at the table. Just, uh, one, two observations and a quick question. I'll start with a question to Chairman Boie. Just, uh, curious if this changes any of the exemptions for the, uh, for severance tax?
It does not.
No changes in exemptions, okay. Uh, from, from my perspective, again, uh, y'all know I'm a healthcare guy. Uh, I have, you know, not gonna get over my skis in this industry, thankful to have so many friends and to have you guys to, to, to really lean on as experts. Like many of us, I've lost so many friends, you know, from Louisiana who probably watching me from Houston right now, and, uh, and, and hope to get those guys home. Uh, when I see this step-down, I think my only concern is that, you know, is it enough? And I know we've got a lot of things that, uh, we're working on right now, and if some of those things don't come to fruition, I think we gotta re, come back and revisit this. This is a half a percent every year gonna be enough that we can see a trend that we can go and grow off of? Uh, that, that's a question I, I would ask. I know we're all gonna be looking at the numbers, you know, we, we're cautious about any kind of dynamic study, but if we don't see those numbers move, it could be because we didn't do enough here.
Yeah, so I know y'all might not see this a whole lot in politics, but we're just being careful not to over-ask it this time.
I hear ya. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Myers. Uh, we're gonna have, again, Representative Willard.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I appreciate you not over-asking here. Uh, just a quick question. Do we have the highest severance tax on oil, oil production? Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Rep. Willard. Um, the board is clear. Uh, we do have a red card, uh, from Mr. Guy Cormier with the Police Juror Association that would like to speak, so if one...